All right, it's 5:30. I'll call our regular first of the month meeting to order. And we have our old call plates.
As you can.
Counselor Godey.
Yep.
Counselor Hess.
Yep.
Counselor Jobs.
Here.
Counselor Hunkel.
Here.
And Mayor Drager.
Here.
All right. We're in our audience and I plead allegiance.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Turning to our prepared agenda. Agenda item number four is the consent agenda for the members of the public that are watching. This is a point in our meeting when we have certain categories of actions and documents that we've received that are marked with an asterisk. And the intent of the consent agenda is that we would improve all of those matters in one single motion and vote with the possible exception if any council member wants any item withdrawn for separate discussion. Counselors, any separate items? If not, then is there motion to approve the consent agenda?
So.
Moved to support.
All support.
Who've been supported, any further discussion on the consent agenda? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So our consent agenda is adopted unanimously. Moving on to appearances, we have two elected council members in the audience, but I assume no one else or not online, so we have no other appearances there. And we've had reports from staff members during our preceding agenda setting meeting, which also was televised. Is there a need for the city administrative for any other staff comments, do you think?
Not this time.
Great. And moving on then to reports from counselors. Counselor Godey?
Yeah, first thing on my list is the HRA finally got the last project that was involved with the $1,000 grant done. It was held up by some backordered materials. And they asked if I would let the city know that above the money that the HRA put into the projects, there was $23,738 spent redoing projects on homes, windows, painting, that kind of stuff. So, you know, it all helps to make the city look better. And, you know, I think it encourages the people in the neighborhood when they see someone fixing up their house, they'd like to make their homes look better. It kind of hopefully feeds on itself.
For both effects.
Hopefully, we can keep this going. And next year, we may even have some other money that may be involved in this. But then the old Union Hall building is still looking for a home, somebody that wants to take it and run with it. Depending on the project, there may be monies available to help you get in there and get up and running. So, you know, anyone who has an idea for it, they could come forward, we'd be happy to show it to them.
What's the status of the ceiling insulation matter?
I texted the guy right after, Friday after Thanksgiving, never got a reply. Waited a few days, called him, and I asked him, did you get my text message? Because I asked him to reply and didn't. He says, yeah, I got it. And I said, I need to set up a time to show you the building. So I have meetings and you have jobs, let's figure out what would work for both of us. Haven't heard yet and gotten a call back, so.
And it's a little weather dependent too, right?
Well, this contractor has cold weather foam that you can put in down to 17 degrees is what he told me. So it could be done, but we don't have a bid yet. And we'll see. Would be nice to get to bed and be able to see if we can get some monies to help.
It is currently being heated, correct?
What?
The Union Hall is being heated, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Minimally, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's the amount that helps.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I interrupted you, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, 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 that's fine. Then the East Range Public Safety Board, the last meeting, the majority of the meeting, the focus, I guess, would be the getting ready to replace Tim Sewer, the chief. He has about a year, no definite date yet, but we're getting closer. And as you all know, we had the meeting with both councils in the White Lakes Arena. You know, they gave a lot of information on what they're looking for. And it looks like that's moving ahead pretty well. We'll see. It's that time of year where there isn't been any building permits, so we didn't have a meeting this month.
Going back in the police department, it didn't really come up in a meeting, but I'm wondering, what's the status of the due damage squad cars? Does anyone know that, or are we back in service, or?
They ordered one new one.
One new one.
It's been shipped directly to the cities. It'll be reworked when it gets there. The other one sits at body shop up here, waiting for parts.
And I think that to save some money, I think Tim said that, and I don't quote, I'm not quoting him verbatim, but he said that they were able to piece out from the damaged squad car into the one that they're putting in together now. So that's going to save a lot because to have a retrofit is pretty.
Yeah, all the interior stuff.
Yeah.
Or cage and everything all fit, so.
Yeah, so it all works.
One of our public works guys and one from White Lakes stripped everything out, and they're going to send it to the cities. And that guy's moving, he'll move us up on.
And, you know, there's other things to consider, but they did some interviews, which is encouraging to finally get some people interested in joining the fire department. And I just wanted to say Santa's going to be hauled around by the fire department on the 15th, so put it on your calendar. That's all I have.
On the 15th?
Yes.
Five to 3:00.
Five thirty and Friday the 15th, okay, right. Good. And that concludes the report?
That's all I have.
All right, thanks very much. Counselor Hess?
Don't have too much. Hats off to the Public Works Department. Last couple of days, they've been going around telling trimming trees back that seem to damage our trucks in the winter time. So if anybody wonders why they're cutting trees, that's the reason, because all it does is damaging our equipment from years and everything else. So they got them all cut back, which is good times, not snowing, so you might as well go see them again. I think they finished that today, so.
Well, they also kind of swept the leaves a little bit this year too in the air. Wasn't that part done in parts of the city anyway, or not? Maybe I was imagining, or maybe Mother Nature took her own, or whatever. Oh, all right, well, it looked ready for the snow. So, I believe that concluded your report then. Counselor Jobs?
So the Rams Annual Entity Year Meeting is the 14th of this month, so we'll have some follow-up the next meeting. We didn't have planning and zoning, as Counselor Godey had indicated, because we did not have any permits, and he pretty much filled us all in with the East Range Public Safety Board. The Minnesota Housing Program that I'm on is, we're coming along really good, I'm super excited about this. We are busy building and putting together a housing trust fund and a seller readiness program. And they will be, from the way I understand it, they will be presenting it to the East Range Joint Powers Board the next meeting. And that's just to name a few. There's some other things that we have in the works. Like I said, it's kind of exciting for our area. And I feel like we are steps, leaps and bounds, actually, ahead of other cities because we've been going to this Minnesota Housing Institute classes. And there's other communities there, like there's the Quad Cities, there's people from Deer River and stuff. I feel like we are years ahead because it's something that we have been working together as, you know, four communities for the last however, for many years. So that's really exciting. Watch for that in the East Range Joint Powers.
That should be encouraging. There was at least one, maybe more, at the Truth and Taxation Meeting.
Yes.
Citizens who expressed frustration that it's been dragging on so long.
Yeah.
You're seeing it from the inside.
Yes.
It really does seem like it's a change in a more implementation direction, right?
And there's good things coming down the pipe, and we're hoping to have, I mean, we have a strategic plan and we have goals in place. And for the Housing Trust Fund and the Seller Readiness Program, we're hoping to have everything put in place by January, no later than February. So I will, just to let you know, this is something that I checked on, I'm still going to be on that board after I leave council, so if you want, I can come in and I can kind of fill you guys in on occasion, it's completely and totally up to you. But really exciting. Last thing, Holiday Heritage Festival is coming up this next weekend, not this weekend, the following weekend, so the 15th and 16th. The parade will be on the 16th, starts at 2:00. Correct, Talisha?
Correct.
The lighting contest is still going strong. You shall have time to pick up forms at the city hall, you can pick one up at my office. You can email me, you can call me, I can send you Google Docs online if you want to do it that way, if you want a PDF form. Like I said, you can pick one up at my office, I can email you one, or you can pick one up at the city hall. So that is all I have to report. I hope to see a lot of people out there. I'm hoping the parade is huge, like the Fourth of July Parade. Looking on it, Talisha, I'm trying.
That's a tough standard to meet.
I'm like, I'm working on it, I'm excited for it, you'll see him either.
Well, we'll hope the weather rolls up.
I'll look forward to it.
I hope it is, it'll be fun, I promise.
Okay, there's a guarantee for the folks. All right, thanks, Counselor Hunkel.
Well, this is the last regular council meeting, I'll be attending as counselor, and it's been quite the educational experience sitting with you, as well as past counselors, J L and Dave Worscheck. Miss you all in these interactions, and it's been an honor to represent our community. So this is the last of the four years that I'll spend here as a council. I want to just repeat and echo a couple of things, Dan. Yep, Santa Run's going to take place on the 15th at 5:30. There's going to be other events on the 15th at the community center. We'll have crafts, snacks, and small gifts children can wrap for a loved one. So I hope the kids will come down to the community center from 3:30 to 5:30 on December 15th. And then we'll be able to wave to Santa as he drives by in the fire truck, so that will be great. And I heard that maybe the Grinch is going to show up, I'm not sure about that, but a big thank you to Caring for Kids and Norma Jean for putting on this holiday lighting contest that really brings cheer to our community. And I'd like to ask the public, even if they're not in it, to win it, the prizes for the holiday, get your name on that list, get people driving around town and enjoying the holiday lights. It brings cheer and, you know, holiday is a hard time for some people, and those lights really bring up your spirits. So thanks for those that do intend to decorate. On the 16th, there's quite a few events taking place. At the community center, they have vendors from 10 to 3:00. They have a lunch provided by Amtech. Santa will be there from 11:00 to 2:00, and then he'll be leading the parade. We have a new holiday queen this year, and we'll announce that queen at the Holiday Heritage Parade, so I'm pretty excited about that. We have a new event that was suggested by Mary Malari, she's got all these, she's got some good ideas, that lady. She suggested a cocoa walk slash cookie crawl. So it's kind of more like a goody crawl, we have a lot of businesses that are putting their names on the list, people can go around to our local businesses and get free goodies, cocoa, cookies, popcorn, all kinds of good things. So far, we have about five businesses on the list, so get out there, have cocoa, anticipate the parade, and come on down and support our businesses and community center and the chamber.
Yeah, I think the businesses at the Pumpkin Fest, it really drove.
Yes, when they had the candy.
Yeah, a lot of good community business relationships and everything else, so yeah, that's great.
And I just want to remind the public, check your fire alarms and CO2. It's that time of year, I had this little beep beep in my ear all day while I was working from home, like, what is that noise? It's driving me nuts. It was like, you know, just a small little tweak, like I couldn't figure it out. I walked around the house, we have five, one in each level, because, you know, I'm scared with the fireplaces that'll cause trouble. I found the CO2 that was beeping. Nothing wrong with the house, it just needed new batteries. But we forget.
Right.
Change it every year.
Isn't that November, that month? Isn't it supposed to be November, it's supposed to change the batteries?
When you change the clock.
Yeah, I thought it was, I sort of do daylight saving times, but never to wait, right? I mean, it's important to do it, particularly in the holiday season.
Yep.
All right, thank you, Counselor Hunkel. Well, it goes without saying, I hope, but we'll have another council meeting, we'll try to more formally wish you, thank you for your service, and wish you on many other pursuits, which of course you'd be doing in the community. But for the audience out there, just a real, I know I speak for the rest of us on the council too, just really appreciating what a privilege it's been to work with this team on behalf of the city. I mean, you contributed enormously both during the council and then all these side activities that are going on that have worked to feed into the general community experience. So our counselors in waiting have big shoes to fill, but I'm sure they're up for it.
Yeah, good job getting, nice pair of size 10 heels.
We'll try to do something more formally, you know, when we do get to our next meeting there. Let's see, just to, for those citizens that didn't go to the Truth and Taxation Meeting that was held last week, was it?
Yep.
Yeah, last week. There were about 13, I think, citizens that showed up, and there was a thorough review of a lot of the budget and some of the associatications for what the community needs to levy for our property tax. Appreciated very much all the citizens that came out, I thought we had some really good constructive thought out comments. It was a very civil meeting. And it's never a pleasant experience for any of us, having to determine the levy, but I think we, you're all choked up over it?
I have my coffee.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. All right, so anyway, I appreciate again that the citizens and the council, I think, appreciated having that opportunity to get the additional perspectives there. On the Water, East Range Joint Water Board, I think after we had our last, the last official meeting in November, the second round of bids came back, there were about $4.5 million less than the original bids. That was the good news. That still would have left the project some funding short, and then there was now a adding in construction costs, which for some mysterious reason hadn't been put in before consulting management costs overseeing that. So the board has some committees working on getting back to our funding sources, trying to see how we can close that gap. And like I was alluding to, we'll probably have some implications and decisions on how much the water system rates at some point will have to increase. But that is dependent on figuring out the time it's available. The Range Mayors do get together quarterly, and we did get together again. The principal point of focus or joint effort was related to the ambulance service legislation. I think Senator Hoshold from Duluth and one of the other representatives are working on legislation to try to address that sustainability of those services in the rural areas, whether it be by districts or by other legislative efforts. But that's the one takeaway I have from that meeting. In the interim, we did certify the elections, and we had our mayoral and council candidates, and the council candidates were write-ins, and the community participated well in that. We were all concerned that only about 27% of the registered voters showed up, and it's a considerable cost to the city. So there will probably be discussions that we'll have on the council about how that whole process can be revised to potentially run them during the even-numbered, more general elections. Because Luke, how much, didn't it cost like $10,000?
Yeah, they had about $7,000 budget, and on that, Jeff, I did bring that up at the East Range Joint Powers Meeting, and Jeff Jacobson said they switched from odd to even, and he said it was amazingly easy. He said they just simply extended the terms of the seat of counselors by a year, and accordingly, and the mayor, of course, and then it just, the rule just.
Wait, you're not going to extend my term a year?
Well, we could always remove yours a year.
Oh, okay. You tell me which one do I go with, which one do I go with? We'll get into that discussion later. So, yeah, it was a viable, anyway, that whole process. I think the other matters, we are pursuing some encouraging commercial development leads. I'll just leave it at that, and hopefully by the end of the holiday season, there will be some news to report. So that's my mayor's report. Under Agenda Item 16, Old Business, the potential corrective sale of property for Mr. Shearing, we had a discussion of that in the pre-meeting. Any further comments on that? I think we could.
I'll just say, the sale went through over a year ago, the county indicated that they thought it might be a parson split. I have a difference of opinion, and I'll come back at the next meeting on that, but the property is in Mr. Shearing's name.
Mr. Shearing is the taxpayer.
Yes.
All right, good. All right, any other new business, city administrator?
Not for the old business, though.
All right, any new business? Agenda Item 17, first two items, a deal with licenses for tobacco and cannabinoid, and city administrator, I believe, recommendation is to table those, is that?
Correct, yep, I've not met with the police chief on those yet, he's not been available, so he's been tied up, I think so.
All right, is there a motion that we tabled, 17.1 and 17.2? Is there support?
High support.
Moved and supported, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those are tabled. Moving on to 17.3, Celebrator, Ruror Member at Large Request. That has been occupied by our deputy clerk, Lindsay Luke. Is there any objection to her continuing on in that position, or is that, I'll move her continuing on in position, is there support?
All support.
Moved and supported, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Celebrated, Rur Gambling Proceeds Request, city administrator, do you want to explain? 17.4?
Yep, so you've got a few options that you can do here. Again, this year, what we did is we did two separate motions and remotes in different meetings, 2,500 for the 3rd of July events and 2,500 for Pumpkin Fest. So we've already done 2023, to clarify it and keep it on the 2024's books, you could move to $5,000 to all of their events, you could table it and wait until January. You could, you know, you could move to allocate 2,500, just like you do 2,500 and 2,500, to do it all on one tool. So however you guys would like to do that.
I'd make a motion to give Celebrator Rur $5,000 to cover their events payable in 2024.
I'll support that.
Moved and supported, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, carry on that. Let's see, we have to adopt a schedule of 2024, regular and special council meeting dates. The city clerk has given us an amended version of that that we have before us, assuming that the variations from the first Tuesday of each month are attributable to holidays, right?
Correct, yep.
And necessity for staff to prepare after the first of each month, is there a motion to approve the proposed council meeting dates? Moved.
All support.
Moved and supported, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 17.6 is the 2024 insurance rate premiums. City administrator, do you want to just explain how those fees would cover and what the rate changes were?
Yep, again, so this is approximately about 7%, we were budgeting around that, and then additional for the dental insurance, but the dental insurance remained the same, so we're actually, we're doing well, we're doing under budget, we're by about 7%. So these insurance premiums cover four employees, this is not union, the union insurance premiums come about February or March, somewhere around there. So you're just approving the raises on the insurance for four employees, non-union. And again, it's around 7%.
Around 7%. All right, is there a motion to approve the proposed health insurance plan?
I'll make that motion.
Moved, supported?
All second.
Moved to second, or supported by Counselor Hess. Any further discussion on that? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have our insurance coverage. Next is resolution, or proposed resolution, 2023-56, adopting the 2024 property tax, there's a correction, I believe, right, we're, the levy will be in 2024, right?
Correct, yep.
Okay. Property tax levy, we have a prepared resolution, and, let's see, I don't think, adopting 2024, wouldn't it?
Correct.
Yeah, so in the prepared resolution, the introductory sentence, Counselor Jobs?
It says, adopting 2023 property tax levy collectible in 2024. That's what it's, that's what it's supposed to say, right?
Well, the collectible part is right.
Yep.
But isn't it go by the year?
The year that.
The levy is happening in 2024, that's when the county auditor is going to be collecting it.
Yeah, that's what it was, so we're setting it in 2023, obviously, for 2024.
Yeah.
All right, well, the proposed resolution, in contrast to the preliminary budget and levy that we set back in September, the proposed levy represents a recommended levy increase of 3% over the levy of the past year, and therefore 2% less than what we set as our preliminary levy back in September. So is there a motion with the slight amendment of the introductory paragraph to?
I'll make the motion to approve the proposed levy at $1,590,629, which is that 3% increase.
Is there support to that?
All support.
Moved and supported. Now, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so we have set our levy, and hopefully citizens appreciate the grant that we talked about earlier at the agenda setting meeting. So this is just applying, I'm sorry, we have already applied for them, it's just receiving the funds. All right. Is there a motion to approve accepting the funds that have been made available for that project?
So.
Moved, supported by Counselor Jobs.
All support.
Dan.
Supported by Counselor Godey. All right. We always like to hear a second spike, Counselor Godey, very good. All right, any further discussion on the proposed resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, the resolution's unanimously adopted. 17.9, Assignment of ARPA, American Re.
These are the COVID funds that we have. Again, this is just a check in a box, we already did this phase one study, we already voted to approve the funds, we just didn't indicate that we're going to use them from the ARPA account. So already done, I just want to make sure that we checked that box that we designated them.
So is there a motion to approve the use of the ARPA funds for the West Industrial Park?
I'll make the motion.
Moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimously adopted. Unanimously adopted. 17.10, Advertise for, Request for Quotes and Request for Proposals?
Qualifications.
Qualifications, I'm sorry. RFQ and RFP. Authorization to.
Advertise.
Yeah, to do those advertisements. Is there a motion to?
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved by Councillor Sekla, seconded by Councillor Hess. Any further discussion? Not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, unanimously adopted. 17.11, Hiring of New Firefighters?
Yep, so the Ruhr Fire Department Committee has two recommendations pending the necessary background checks and physicals. And we're looking for your approval on the Ruhr, for two hires on the Ruhr Fire Department. It's Hiring Committee's recommendation.
I'll make a motion to hire the two firefighters. They pass all requirements.
And the background checks and everything, all been done?
They'll be done after this.
After this, okay. So, subject to background checks and completion of the necessary documentation, Councillor Cody moves approval of the two selected nominees.
I'll support.
Supported by Councillor Goss. Any further discussion? Not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous again, and it's a real joy to get some new firefighters on, right? That's a real tribute to the community of the State Board. 17.12, Resolution, Proposed Resolution, 2023-57, Repealing and Replacing Personnel Policy. I believe the city administrator's recommendation is that we table it to get a further review of those portions which the deputy clerk has highlighted. And I assume we take it up again at our next meeting?
Yep, she's done a really good job in your packets. You can look through, there's just a lot of reading in there. It has, well, it was sent on the email, the original. It's like 47 pages long, so.
Is there a motion to?
I'll make the motion table.
Motion to table by Councillor Hess. I'll support it, supported by Councillor Cody. And the other councillors are getting a chance to weigh the paper involved in the personnel policy amendment. Any further questions on the motion to table? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is tabled.
Any of you want that printed out? I can certainly do that for you if you don't want your electronic.
Richard, thank you.
I can have it.
Another gift. Party gift.
Easy reading.
Heavy reading.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, moving on to 17.13. It's designated as retention premium. The city administrator, do you want to explain this? I think each of us as councillors had an opportunity to kind of consider this. Do you want me to explain it or do you want?
No, I can explain it. So, with the retirement of Wayne Thuringer and with the chaos that we had trying to get myself on board and all of this, this is just a gesture by mayor and council, if you guys would entertain that, to give out, it's basically a bonus one time for the end of the year. How it comes over the overtime funds? Our overtime funds are sitting at about $40,000 right now. With the weather, the way it's looking, I don't see us using all of it by the end of the year. So, I was hoping that they could take home about $1,000, so it'd be around $1,400 or $1,500 per employee. It would just pertain to the employees that were working here, not myself. It would be the library, it would be just the ones working under Stephanie's guidance. We're taking those responsibilities under Wayne's. So, it'd be seven employees, the water wastewater, public works, and then city hall. So, we'd have about, if you did $1,500, it would be, it'd be $10,500. $1,400 would be like $9,800, $1,300, or $9,100. I think if you did $1,500, you'd probably get that $1,000 take-home. That's just what I'm thinking of.
Councillors, sort of, distilled plots, I guess?
It was just, it's a good way to reward them for the time they did a lot of extra work when we weren't paying Stephanie's wages. So, it's just taking them, some of the money we saved for not paying Stephanie and rewarding them for their extra work.
We ran a few months without Wayne here. It is common to do this, you know, where I've been employed previously, we've gotten some things like this. It would be noted when we handed it out, this is a one-time thing. It's not to be expected every year.
Was that include the ladies in the office?
It does. Yep.
Oh, was everybody that was here when Wayne was here, when Steph had left? And so, I mean, everybody was picking up extra slack.
Yes, it would be during that timeframe. So, specifically, it would be Jerry and Justin, the water and wastewater departments because Wayne was gone. Same with public works, it would be Erin, Charlie, and Russ. And then at City Hall, it would be the staff at City Hall, which would be Kimberly and Lindsay.
I look at it too, as kind of a recognition of what everybody went through with COVID too. I mean, this is the team really, we're tired through all that. No, no, it doesn't have to be indirectly. But these employees who went through all that and then were there to cover when we had dislocations on our staff, it just seems to me very appropriate that we recognize and reward on a non-recurring basis.
I make a motion to offer the retention premium to those employees that picked up the slack when the two individuals were gone.
Do you want to set a dollar mark?
$1,500. $1,500, Richard says.
I'll second it.
Okay, all right, $1,500, all right.
That'll get them back down good though.
Yeah, that's about right. Good, okay, let's just say. All right, so it's been moved and supported by Councillor Honkla, supported by Councillor Hess. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously and hopefully that'll break their other holiday celebrations.
Thanks for the work, sticking through this one. So, when employees leave and go to other places, they stuck with us in this transition.
Yeah, it's a real credit to them.
Yeah, and there was some serious stress that was happening behind the scenes. Serious stress.
Sometimes not so much behind the scenes, but definitely it was a stressful period, so. All right, city administrator, 17.14, any other business?
No, the only thing, you know, and if you're comfortable just bringing up the rates at the next meeting, we don't have to do a special meeting then. We can just do them.
Your next meeting?
Okay. I would encourage.
And that will leave enough time?
Yeah, it leaves enough time. I would encourage you to stop by my office. And, you know, I've got some information on that and to kind of show you where the dollars are coming from and what we're looking at. And then if you're comfortable with the levy at 3%, which we just set, I'll just meet with the department heads and we're there already, we'll just go through it. And then another thing I could do at the beginning of the year, just kind of give you guys a handout that kind of shows, hey, this is what's in this budget. I kind of did that already at the beginning, but it'll be just kind of a reminder, good reminder, and some of the new things that pop up.
Good. Well, councillors, any other matters or is motion to adjourn in order?
I got one thing.
Okay, councillor.
I want to congratulate Luke. He did an excellent job at our taxation meeting, explaining everything. I forgot that when I was doing it. Hats up to you, you've done an excellent job. There were some tough questions. You can answer it better than we can.